Good evening, Hampstead. Today is Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at approximately 7:02 PM. And we are going to call to order a special meeting to talk about a number of items. And Melissa, would you mind doing the roll call?
Sure. David Smith?
Here.
Megan Malcolm?
Here.
Caitlin Parnell?
Here.
Erin Pellegrini?
Here.
Jason Giard?
Here.
Thank you. And also seated at the board table is new superintendent Bob Thompson and CFO Jeff Dowd.
Thank you, Melissa. I'll go ahead and stand for the pledge, and I'll ask our new superintendent to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to get into current business. Before we do, we just want a small, quick word of, we want to thank everybody who's brought us to this point of a new SAU 55. We want to thank Dr. Metzler, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Collins, who are no longer with the district. But we appreciate what they've done to get us to this point and carry on a brand-new SAU 55 with brand-new and some familiar faces as well. So, thank you all, for those that are not here, and thank you for all that are here and making it a better SAU, building on what's been done in the past. For our first agenda item, I will turn this over to Superintendent Bob Thompson.
Thank you. I'd like to announce Peter Smith as the new assistant principal at the Hampstead Central School. Peter is joining us from Nashville North, where he served as an assistant principal. Peter also has administrative experience in the Franklin School District. And prior to his tenure in Franklin, he was a teacher in the World Language Program at Pinkerton Academy for 16 years. He had a very illustrious teaching career and earned himself the Shepherd Faculty Award for outstanding contributions to the school community. As many people know, hiring new administrators in July can be a challenge. And we are very, very fortunate to have someone of such high caliber joining our administrative team. And at this time, I'd just like to turn it over to Pete, so that folks can put a name with a face.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It's truly a pleasure to be here as a resident of Hampstead. I live right down the street, and to be able to serve my community as the assistant principal at the Central School, you can't ask for any better honor than that. Super excited to get started. Actually, I want all the kids and teachers back, like now. But I have to wait until, you know, August comes along, but I'm very, very excited to get started. And taking my experience and my expertise and helping to build the Hampstead School District and working along with the board and the administrative team. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome to the team. All right, very good. All right, so next, we're going to turn it over to another new face of the town to talk about Summer Learning Academy. So, Nicole? I don't know if, maybe Bob, if you want to introduce the community again to Nicole, just real quick?
Absolutely. So, Nicole Thomaselli is the new Director of 21st Century Learning Assessment and Technology. She would be replacing Mike Flynn. Nicole joins us from the Hollis School District, where she was the Hollis School District Curriculum Administrator. Previous to that, Nicole has experience in the Nashville School District. And also, to her credit, was one of the founding members of Bedford High School.
Thank you, Bob. That's very sweet of you to say all those nice things. I hope this projector turns on. It's just going to warm up a minute. Okay, so I put together a little slide to give you a sketch outline of what our Summer Learning Academy is going to look like. We are going to be sharing more program details and information with families. And an email will go out within the next week or so with a registration form for all families to complete, so that we know exactly who is able to attend. We're going to have two options. One will be an onsite targeted instructional opportunity for students who we know have been identified by our data teams at both schools as needing some support and remediation. And then we're also going to open up all of our licensed programs to all of the students K through eight for access starting August 1st. So, to give you a rough schedule, we're going to have eight days of instruction from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM onsite. From 9 until 10:30, for one of the groups, will be focused learning in either math, reading at the K3 school. At the 4, 5, 6 school, we're also going to incorporate some SEL and advisory-type lessons. There'll be time for snack and recess and some transition. And then we're going to bring in some hands-on learning opportunities. For the younger students, we're going to contract with Renaissance Kids, which is a local provider of science hands-on STEM activities that comes with really great reviews from the community. So, those will be some, like, STEM engineering workshops that kids can enroll in. And they will kind of offset some of the reading and math instruction to help make it fun and hands-on for the kids. We expect to need to stagger the schedule to accommodate all of the kids who are going to be participating. So, a second group will do their hands-on work first and then snack recess and transition over to their longer block of reading and math instruction. For the older students in groups, we'll say C and D, we're going to follow a very similar model. In the afternoon for, say, Group C, with that one hour, will be a hands-on project-based learning that will really, really get them going, doing some service-based learning. And we're very excited about following a farm-to-table type of model, where we incorporate the new community garden and the St. Anne's Food Pantry into the project. And we're hoping to incorporate some type of multi-age picnic gathering on the very last day, where kids can get to know each other, kind of spread out, have it be a social event, and celebrate some of the food that they've been growing all summer. For the, does anyone have questions about the onsite piece?
I have one question, which is about transportation. Have we thought about transportation?
We have. We have thought about transportation, and I think we will be able to provide transportation. I'll be contracting, is it First Student? Once we get the registration forms back from parents, one of the questions will be, will you be needing transportation to school? And if so, we'll work together to coordinate the bus routes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, so the online extension resources, we're going to open those up starting, actually, August 2nd is a Monday, so we'll start on a Monday. And we're going to, just to allow families that maybe are traveling or have, that aren't able to come onsite, they can make their own schedule, but we will have someone allocated to be instructional support to help kids understand how to log in, how to make progress. If children aren't logging in and aren't participating at all, we'll be making phone calls and kind of supporting them and tutoring them through some of the tools. These are just a very short list of tools that we've identified that we have licensing for through the summer. But we'll be doing a little bit more research with the data teams in the coming weeks. And these are tools that, the students are familiar already with Epic Reading. Big Ideas Math has a lot of online components to it, and since we're moving towards Big Ideas, we thought this might be a good time to introduce some of their math games and some of their math fluency activities. Dreambox is another tool we're going to be introducing at the Central School. It is an adaptive math-based program that will help us target certain skills, and it's a very engaging product for kids. At the middle school, they've already been using Big Ideas Math, so that shouldn't be too complicated. Kids will be logging into that, as well as Prodigy and iReady Skills and Delta Math. And we're also looking at reading programs for the middle school as well.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, regarding, I imagine both students will be going to central and middle school. Thinking because of the renovations, how that's going to, if that's going to affect?
Yeah, that's a good thought. We have to look at the numbers. I believe the Central School has identified, I'll say, less than 30 students that need to come onsite. So, I don't think the building renovation portion will be of a concern, but you're right, we will need to think carefully about transportation. And one thing we did kind of, Mr. Dowd and I were talking about today, is we might need to stagger the start times a little bit based on the busing. If we have kids, if we have a lot of kids wanting busing transportation, we'll stagger the start times by about a half an hour so that our buses can accommodate K through, or first grade through eighth graders.
Just to follow up on that, so this is targeted, but you do, you will allow other students, if families want their child to go, and they're not the targeted students, they can still volunteer for this?
We're going to have to do like a targeted list first to make sure that we invite the families who need the remediation the most first. But then if there are spots after that, and certainly, one of our, one of my goals is to work, we have a meeting tomorrow with Pinkerton, to reach out to some of the volunteer groups at Pinkerton. If we need to build capacity and get more, I'll say, high school volunteers to help make more spaces in the STEM workshops, then that's what we'll do. So, if there's a lot of interest of people who are not, say, on that targeted list of population, but they want to attend the STEM workshops, we'll see if we can grow the capacity.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have experience with that Renaissance Kids. That's, they're great. They do a really great job. So, I was happy to see that up there, the younger students.
Yep. Dr. Chaney recommended Renaissance Kids early on, and I did some homework. And she gave him a call, and he's very willing and excited to come onsite and do work with Hampstead Kids. So, we're thrilled that this is going to come together.
Is this right here going to be sent out to families ahead of the registration? Because I know people online have said that they really can't see this.
Oh, okay, sure.
So, until we do the technology change, is this something that can be sent out?
Yes, we can send that out with the board packet.
Yeah, and I believe Nicole and I talked about sending a communication out to parents next week.
Okay.
So, we'll make sure that all of this information is included.
So, yeah, probably the only issue with that would be if they do have to stagger some times, and we put a little, you know, disclaimer in there, the times may change.
Yep, you're right.
This is good.
Yeah, it's great.
Good, thank you. And we have, I probably didn't mention this, but we do have Hampstead-certified teachers who have stepped up over the summer to come in and work onsite. So, we're really, really excited about those individuals willing to come in in August and work with the kids directly. So, that'll be great.
Really appreciate that. Any more questions for Nicole? Thank you so much. All right, so next on the agenda is Safe Return to In-Person Learning Plan for Mr. Thompson.
So, on June 21st, I was able to submit to the Department of Education the Return to In-Person Learning Plan. Now, this plan is a requirement in order for the school district to access ESAR funds. Also, a copy is available on the Hampstead School website. It's listed under COVID Resources. You can also email me. I'd be happy to share a copy and have any discussion with any community members about our plan. Now, the plan does look to scale back some of the COVID protocols that were in place this previous school year. Most notably, we'll move from a mandatory mask protocol to a parent-choice or optional mask mandate. Now, that is as of conditions that exist today. Now, obviously, and this is in line with the Department of Health and Human Services, who a few weeks ago relaxed their mask guidance in the state of New Hampshire. And, you know, we are going to continue to monitor local conditions, look at data from the state, and are willing and able to be able to adjust our position in terms of what protocols will be in place. So, this is an evolution. This is an ongoing conversation that we'd have as we get closer to the start of school. And I'll entertain any questions folks might have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So, I had a question really around our youngest students. We know that's a population who's not going to be vaccinated immediately. But we also know that, you know, masks, while they work, they have an impact on our kids. Is there, this may be premature, so please feel free to say, we're still working on this. Is there any consideration into one classroom per grade? If you had the population who, of families who said, look, we really need our child to still wear a mask, we need to protect somebody at home, are we looking into that if the numbers would support it?
Absolutely. And one piece that I should have noted is that it is our intention, as we get closer to the start of school, to seek community input and input from parents relative to what protocols they'd like to see in place. And, you know, I had a parent reach out to me with a great suggestion that, you know, would it be possible to have a mask-mandatory classroom? And I would be open to exploring that option. I do think it's a little premature. But as we get closer to the beginning of school, that is certainly something that we can explore. Obviously, there's some logistics in terms of how long would it be a mask-required classroom? You know, times when children are in the building and not necessarily in a classroom. So, I am certainly open to that, and I do think that if the numbers were to necessitate, we could do a mask-required classroom.
I appreciate that consideration. I mean, I know that we're in a much, much better place. But we, I know that we still have some medically vulnerable children. And in addition, we don't know about family members, so if it's being taken into consideration.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Thompson, on the return plan?
That's going to do it for the, okay, plan, yep.
All right, next agenda item is we want to talk about policy JFAB. This is regarding admission of non-resident students. And the discussion we want to have is around, I'll actually let Mr. Thompson speak to this.
Absolutely. So, in our non-public session, we'll discuss a specific request that I have received from a staff member to tuition their child into the Hampstead Schools. The, in review of policy JFAB, which is the admission of non-resident students, there's a section in the policy, it's the third full paragraph down, that says, "Students who do not legally qualify as residents of the district who are admitted by the Board or its designee shall be charged tuition." And I was just hoping to have a conversation with the Board and get some direction in terms of that language around the Board or its designee. And I say this because it's not typical for the Board to meet over the summer months. And the summer months tend to be a time where families are making decisions about their children's schooling. And we could receive a tuition request over the summer, as we have in this case. And a timely response for parents would be appropriate. So, I wanted to throw that out to the Board to see how they would like to handle any requests that might come in over the summer months.
Yep. So, for me, immediately, I think of, you know, at the last board meeting, we nominated that Ms. Parnell would sign off anything that's needed for financials, any kind of reports. I don't know if this is covered under that or if we want to designate Mr. Thompson as with the ability to do it. But that's my opinion on those. We could go one of either ways.
I think I was only, I think that's hiring designation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm okay if, during the summer months, you know, giving Bob the ability to do it.
I agree.
So, I guess I'd be looking for a motion to designate Mr. Thompson to approve the non-resident students in accordance with JFAB. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Giard, seconded by Ms. Malcolm. Any discussion? The only discussion I would like to have is, I'd ask that the policy committee do to take this up. It has been four years, almost five years maybe, since it's been reviewed. So, I'd like to, you know, make sure that's put, and if we think that we should, I'll just say, my suggestion is if we think during the summer months, we say, the superintendent, maybe we want to put that right in the policy. So, but that's up for debate, discussion amongst the policy committee. All right. I'll approve the motion. Raise your hand. All right. Unanimous. All right, next one is SAU 55 update. So, just a couple of things we want to make note of. The SAU 55 has transitioned to fully Hampstead. Your Hampstead Board is now the SAU 55 Board. The offices are just about open. They're open, but there's a little bit of construction going on. Phones are being put in line this week. The building is located over by the library. It is the third building on the left and on the second floor, for anybody that's looking for it. If you've not been able to tour it, I know a few of us have, by all means, Ms. Thompson has invited anybody who wants to stop by, say hello. I found out that most of the members do not drink coffee, so I was, if you want to bring coffee, probably don't want to do that, but.
Well, some members do, Mr. Smith.
That's right, that's right. Two members here do.
Yeah.
But definitely, it's a nice, local area, building partnerships with the library and others, so it's great to see that. Furthermore, on the SAU separation, I'll make a quick statement and then be looking for a motion. We have attempted by working with our attorney, with Timberlane's attorney, to come to an agreement ahead of our separation. That has not been the case. We have not come to that agreement yet. So, until we do, we are going to be looking to encumber funds from the SAU 55 budget to cover liabilities that are going to be there. We're not exactly sure on the exact numbers yet, because we're still going through the audit process of the 2020 through 2021 audit. So, we will be looking to make a motion to encumber a specific funds and the liabilities to be the 2020's audit reports liabilities. So, we'll be looking to make a motion, and I'll read aloud, that the Board vote to encumber the otherwise unassigned fund balance on the books of SAU 55 for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $243,716. Said encumbrance representing the school administrative unit's total other post-employment benefits liability determined as of the close of the fiscal year 2020. Said sums representing legally enforceable obligations of the SAU which existed as of the close of the fiscal year 2021. And further, that the Board authorize its business administrator to adjust the encumbrance as of the close of the 2021 fiscal year to reflect any increase or decrease in the post-employment liabilities of the SAU.
So moved.
Second. Second from Mr. Giard. Any questions about this? Any comments around this? I'll just say, we do.
This doesn't, if for some reason miraculously it doesn't get used, it goes back?
Yep, so how it would be is, once the close of the 2020 to 21 budget audit finishes, we do expect it to be less than the $243,716. That will, that money would be allocated for the liabilities. Any balance of the budget would be returned to Timberlane and to Hampstead based on the 77% to 23%-ish ratio of what we pay into it, and what Timberlane pays into it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Jeff, did I cover that correct? Perfect, all right, thank you. All right. So, we've got a motion, we've got a seconded. Any more discussion, questions? All right, all approved. Raise your hand. That says unanimously. Okay. Next on the agenda is Strategic Plan Update with Mr. Thompson, who is going to present some options and discussion around how we go about this process and with who.
Great, thank you. So, the current five-year strategic plan expired in 2020. And obviously, due to the pandemic, the future strategic plan was, work was put on hold. So, it's that time to update our plan. Really, the strategic plan will serve as the roadmap for our school district. It guides and directs really all of the activities, and it represents the values of the school and greater community as well. The work will be completed by a steering committee, which will be made up of a representative group of staff members from both the Central School, from the middle school, and also the new school district office, as well as parents, school board members, and also community members at large. Now, to facilitate this work, we'd like to contract with an outside agency. And over the last few months, I have been able to secure three separate bids from three different organizations, all that have extensive experience in the strategic planning process. So, contained within the board packet are three proposals. One is from NESDEC, the New England School Development Council. Now, many of you may be familiar with NESDEC. They do provide the school projections on an annual basis. I also have a proposal from an agency called Think Strategy. This is from a company that is outside of Plastow. Again, I have some experience working with Think Strategy in their updating of the SAU 41 strategic plan and the ARSEC Academy Plan as well. And then I have a third proposal from Barnes Coaching and Consulting. Again, someone with some experience developing and implementing strategic plans for school districts. So, in review of these three plans, it would be my recommendation that we look to contract with Think Strategy. I like the proposal that was put together for the district, because, one, it meets the timeline. What I believe is an appropriate timeline for this work is, we would begin in the first week of August. And I'd like to conclude sometime around December, so that we could have the new strategic plan in place mid-year of 2022. In talking with Dr. Miller, who is the CEO of Think Strategy, he thinks that's a very doable timeline and has outlined in his proposal the work that would be done between now and then. You know, some of the other proposals, the NESDEC proposal is very comprehensive. However, in a piece of the NESDEC proposal is seeking community input, which is something that we will plan to do. We have a tool called Thought Exchange that the district has that I believe is a tool that will allow us to collect input from stakeholders so that we can make sure that the next strategic plan is really driven by the values of the various stakeholder groups. So, I'll entertain any questions folks may have about the three proposals.
I think my only, when I look at this, my only questions, I suppose, they're very different in length. So, this NESDEC one is, like you said, very comprehensive. Think Strategy outlines things pretty well, but not quite is in detail. And then this one has very little. So, it's kind of hard to tell what they're going to really do. So, I think we'd kind of have to leave that to you. But do you have any, is there anything in these other plans that you would want in this Think Strategy? Or is this, is this enough, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
And that's a question David and I had this conversation prior to the board meeting. And so, in reaching out to Dr. Miller, we can adjust his proposal if we find that, you know, we need something a little bit more comprehensive. There is some work. You run the gamut of some school districts that will do that work themselves, which I don't recommend. The strategic plan is a community document. It's not the superintendent's document. So, I do think it's important for us to have a facilitator, an outside facilitator come in. So, when you have an outside facilitator, sometimes you have someone who will sort of set the framework for you, and the district does most of the work. And then you have someone like NESDEC, which will do a very comprehensive job from start to finish. What I think we need is something in the middle. I believe that we have a very talented group of administrators that we've brought on board. And there's also the opportunity to cultivate a lot of teacher leadership. So, I'd like for the district to do some of that work. And I see Think Strategy's proposal as an opportunity to do that. And I've been assured by Dr. Miller that if we need to make some adjustments in order to make it a little bit more comprehensive, we can certainly do that. What I appreciated is, his rate is very competitive, which, you know, as opposed to NESDEC, which is, it's pricey, you know. So, I think that's what I find intriguing about Think Strategy. They'll cater whatever the need of the district is as we work through this process to ensure that we get to that final product. So, I would caution us when we look at that bottom-line price, as we move along, it could be adjusted. But I'm comfortable with this, with the pricing.
And you're comfortable with the outline that they gave you, being able to work with that with the staff you have and?
Absolutely.
Ms. Parnell?
I appreciate that explanation, because I had some of the same questions as Erin, just because with a new SAU, with a new, you know, we have new staff, I don't want you guys to, I know you're going to put everything into this, but there's a lot going on. So, as you're explaining it, that this can be adjusted, if we need additional support, I think is appreciated. So, I think, I mean, that makes sense. It gives us some flexibility.
And a lot of the work with strategic planning is seeking community input. And as we'll see with the superintendent entry plan, there's already process for that. And then also the work that we're doing, and I'd be happy to report out at a future meeting. And then also the work that we're doing, and I'd be happy to report out at a future meeting that we're doing with Thought Exchange, really is going to, to really set the stage for the writing of the plan because we're going to have so much robust feedback and input from community members, for, for better or for worse, that I think that that's going to aid in the writing of the plan when we actually sit down to do that. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the proposal.
That was probably my main concern. And the discussion that Ms. Thompson and I had coming up with the agenda, came through this, talking about it, that, you know, there is going to be a lot on your plate, Mr. Thompson. There's going to be a lot on Nicole's plate, Mr. Smith's plate, I mean. And, you know, as long as Think Strategy, I'd almost set the precedent with them that we're going to be asking for a bit more than what they have here. Because while the strategic plan is important, you know, making sure that we're not missing a beat with a new SAU, everything. I want to make sure we're not, you know, handicapping ourselves on that. So that was one of the big discussions we had because I was going towards, let's do NESDEC. They're the Cadillac. They're going to do most of it for us. Not everything. But if, you know, I'm okay with the recommendation as long as we're going to set that precedent, we're going to use them a little bit more.
And, and the other piece too is, you know, I, I will provide, you know, frequent updates at, at each board meeting. You know, the, the only thing I could see would be possibly as we dig into the work, an extension of the timeline. Because I can tell you that August to December is a fairly aggressive timeline. So, you know, it, it, I could come back here and say, we're going to push it off until, till March. But at this point in my conversations with Think Strategy, it seems like a doable timeline.
Okay. The other one that, you know, we've talked about, and I want the board to really think about this one right now or discuss it is, with Think Strategy, correct me if I'm wrong if it's changed, but it's all done via Zoom. There's no in-person with the community. So as long as we're comfortable with that, that's the only thing I saw as, I'd say, the negative.
And the facilitator, the facilitator will facilitate the group through Zoom. I do think that there's an opportunity for us as a group to, to certainly get together sort of for, at least for organizational meetings, and we can have the facilitator join us via Zoom. So there is an opportunity for us to, to have some in-person meetings. Because I do feel as though that is important for us to have that.
Well, I think, I think that, you know, I know I participated in as a resident back, what, 2016, 17, I think it was, when they were coming up with what is the plan for our school infrastructure, like more about central school. And I thought that was really good that you had, you know, probably about 20, 25, maybe 40 people in a room, you know, just whiteboarding everything, just saying what, what makes sense, what doesn't. And having that interaction that you do lose with Zoom. As good as Zoom is, we, I do it at work almost every day, maybe too much. But it's, you know, that, that interaction, I think, is important. So it's just something I want us to be cognizant of how to bring that personal element in, that I think even Thought Exchange loses as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I agree. I had the same, I had the exact same concerns, actually, and I was doing the same thing, thinking, well, this, this one really covers everything. So again, it's, it's going to be a, you know, a comfort level for you and, and your team. And, you know, if you do start to feel that things are piling on, because again, new SAU, all these different things, that you'll be able to expand this to, to help alleviate some of that, I think, is important. So.
That, that's where I would challenge the administrators, if there's somewhere they're going to pick up on is get that community involvement face to face at some point. If that's not going to be done by Think Strategy, or maybe they Zoom into it and everybody else in person. But that's my only recommendation on that piece as well.
I mean, with the community part of it, the Zoom might make it easier because there's so much more participation, it seems, when there's Zoom. But I, I do agree, having meetings in person is, is valuable. So if you can do that.
Absolutely.
Any more questions on this? I think it's not a good step. I think we've got, got an outline for a plan, you know, especially where we're going to have community involvement starting in August. So I don't think we need a motion for this. I think this is covered already in the finding within the budget. So I don't, but as long as we have concurrence between everybody, that we're good with the recommendation. Yep. Consensus?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this. And ahead of your start date too, so appreciated the homework you were doing there.
Yep.
All right. Next on the agenda, one, of course, I'm very excited to hear more about. All right. So I'm very excited about this one, central school renovation. I think everybody's seen the, the chain linked fence up. You've seen the signs. Construction has started. There's work being done. So Mr. Dowd, turn it over to you.
Excellent. Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
Loud and clear.
So in your packets, you have a rendering of the central school renovations as most recent rendering dated July 2nd, 2021. I know that we are having some video issues and that's why I haven't put it up on, on the screen. It just wouldn't make too much of a difference. The big difference here and what's going on is we had had a band at the bottom of the, of the walls on each side. And it had been a, like a grayish brick. And there were some manufacturing problems with that, with that grayish brick. So we're just taking the red brick and bringing it all the way down to the ground level. So that's that. Nothing terribly exciting there. So the project remains on schedule. I know, as you mentioned, David, there is fencing up and around the, the work area. We had had an asbestos survey completed prior to the start of work, just to be 100% sure and certain that we were asbestos free. And we discovered asbestos in a couple of different areas. Not a lot, but enough that we were having it mitigated and that mitigation is underway and, and partly completed. So that's the first step that we took to getting this project underway for construction. So as a general proposition, despite that, we're, we're pretty much on schedule, perhaps a day or two ahead of where we wanted to be at this point. I think it's important to note that the exterior work that we're looking at was always scheduled to be completed in September, October timeframe. And the preference is to start on the drop-off side. We have a safety plan in place. We have a safety plan in place now for the summer. We'll have a safety place and plan, safety plan in place for the, the start of school. And once school starts, if that side can be complete, that'll ease the burden of safety on that, on that side of the building. So we also have been informed that our HVAC units, and it's not us, it's everyone, our HVAC units probably will not be in until the end of September. And this is not a common, this is not an uncommon problem, not, again, not for our district, but because, because there are a lot of federal funding projects going on right now, or federal funded projects going on right now, the manufacturers are still playing catch-up. And so it looks like those units will be coming in toward the end of September. We have been working with our contractors for a workaround plan to make sure that, that the classrooms, once they're occupied after the start of school, have sufficient fresh air. And there are a couple of different options and proposals that they're working on right now to make sure that that can happen. And we're looking and, and working with them to make sure that the equipment can be installed with as least disruptive impact on our students once they're back in school as possible. So that means it'll be their second shift, weekends, holiday weekend, that sort of thing. So the work aside from that can proceed around all of that entirely. But that's just by way of update on where things are.
Questions? Just want to dig into it just a little bit deeper on that, Jeff, as far as, I know the plan has new windows. So that means those air ACs that are right now placed in the windows would be out by the time the students come back on September, I think it's 7th, that Tuesday. So that's what you're talking about is finding some sort of different way to get air conditioning in there as well? Not just air circulation, but to keep the rooms cool?
Fresh air. And we're looking at air conditioning. We'd like to have that. The building is in a way in a, a better shape than it has been in the past because it'll be insulated. So it shouldn't be getting as hot during the day. But we're definitely looking to get air conditioning in if possible. Air conditioning is the easy part. Heat is the easy part. It's more the fresh air delivery.
Okay.
That we'd like to make sure we can get in and do properly. So we have a couple of plans in place that we're running by our building inspector to make sure, comply with, with whatever regulations that may be in place.
Perfect. And then I know, I had forwarded you on the information of one, I guess, contractor that was looking to, you know, bid on the project. So just to remind anybody that wants to bid to work through either Mr. Dowd or through BPS, which that information has been shared multiple times, but feel free to reach out to Mr. Dowd if wanting to bid on the project.
And I can put a, a link up on the website if we don't have one. BPS, our, our contractor, is using a bid portal site, which helps to make sure that our school plans and schematics are out there and available for contractors and really contractors only to bid on. So they can go on, register and see the bids, see the plans, see what we need, and submit to proposals. That's directly through BPS.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Go into, you know, the big reason we're here tonight to talk to Mr. Thompson about the, his 90-day entry plan. So, Ms. Thompson, congratulations and can't wait to hear it.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm here this evening to present my superintendent of schools entry plan, which essentially covers the, the first 90 days of my superintendency. And a lot of the work actually has, has already begun prior to July 1. Basically, the purpose of the superintendent plan is to outline specific goals and activities that will occur within the first 90 days of my superintendency. And the entry plan focuses on engaging key stakeholder groups. That includes teachers, support staff, administrators, school board members, community members, the business community, nonprofit organizations, and civic leaders. Essentially, what I really want to do is I, I want to hear from everyone in this community. If you've had a child that has come through the school, if you pay property taxes that support this school, if you have an opinion of the school, I would really love the opportunity to meet with you. It's a great opportunity for you to come to the new SAU office at 20 Mary Clark Lane, Unit 10, so we can have that conversation. We can also meet at Bean Town Cafe. I'd be more than happy to buy a cup of coffee. But I really want to use this as an opportunity to meet as many stakeholders as absolutely possible. So the information that's collected from the entry plan will provide insight into the day-to-day operations of the district. It will facilitate the building of relationships with key stakeholders and determine where critical support and resources will be allocated. And essentially, this will serve, as I indicated earlier, as the foundation for the next strategic plan. Really, it's critically important that I understand the values of this community. And to do so, I need to hear from as many people as possible. When a new superintendent or new leadership comes on board, people often want to know, what is your vision? What are you going to do for the district? Where are you going to bring the district? And I push back on that a little bit, and I say, that vision is not about me. The vision is a collective vision. It's, it's a we. And the first 90 days of my superintendency sets out to create the we. So I've established four goals for this work. The first one is to examine the current instructional practices within the Hampstead School District. The second goal is to develop and maintain proactive and open relationships with community members, parents, civic leaders, and local business community members. Three, to gain a comprehensive understanding of the operational needs of the school district. And four, to develop and enhance the capacity for organizational leadership within the Hampstead School District. So if we look at goal number one, to examine the current instructional practices within the Hampstead School District. So essentially what I've done is I've outlined a series of activities with target dates for their completion. And I, I'm not going to go through every one of them. The plan I emailed out to all parents yesterday. And after tonight's presentation, it will be displayed on the SAU website or the Hampstead School District website. And I can also, if anyone, any community member reaches out to me, I'd be happy to, to share a copy of the plan with them as well. So I just want to highlight a couple of activities under goal number one. And that's to examine current instructional practices within the Hampstead School District. So one activity is to extend an opportunity to all faculty and staff for either an in-person or a Zoom listening session. And I really want to focus those meetings on three essential questions. What do you value most about the Hampstead School District? Where do you see areas for growth within the Hampstead School District? And how could the Hampstead Superintendent of Schools support your work with students? And so earlier this week, I sent out an invitation to all staff members at both the central school and the middle school, inviting them to small group meetings or individual meetings or Zoom meeting. And essentially what I'm going to do is I'm going to record their responses. And in the opening days of school, I will tabulate their responses. And when it comes to that first question about what do you value most about the Hampstead School District, those are essentially going to become our core values for the year. They're going to guide the work of the Hampstead School District. And then as we begin that strategic planning process, that feedback around that second question, where do you see areas of growth within the Hampstead School District, that will help to drive some of that strategic planning work. A second activity, and again, there's a much more comprehensive list of activities in the plan. I just wanted to highlight a few for folks, is to coordinate with Pinkerton Academy's administration to examine Hampstead students' preparedness for high school, career and college readiness, career and technical education offerings, and the transition process for incoming students. And a lot of this work is being led by Nicole Tomaselli, our Director of 21st Century Learning Assessment and Technology. So tomorrow morning, we will travel to Pinkerton Academy, myself, Nicole, and the Director of Student Services. We will meet with a team of administrators at Pinkerton. We'll tour the campus and we'll begin what will be an ongoing conversation about the success of our students at, at Pinkerton Academy. Nicole also has a meeting scheduled the following week to sit down and really drill into instructional practices at Pinkerton. And really, this is done very strategically and very purposely. Really, we want to create that pre-K through 12 vision of our students. What is it that we want for our students the day that they walk through on the first day of school? And I'll give you a great example. So today was the first day of our extended school year program at the Hampstead Central School. And I had the honor of being there during drop-off. And this is, this was a really special moment because there, there were our preschoolers who have never sat, never stepped foot into a public school for the very, very first time. Were walking through the front doors of Hampstead Central School to begin their long 14-year tenure under our care. And to see the excitement and the joy that these children had on their face. And I, and I want you to take that and bookend it with that graduate in 12th grade with, that has that same joy and excitement walking across the stage at graduation. Now, our job as a leadership team and as a school district is to have that conversation of, all right, that, that preschooler that walked through the door, what tools do we want to equip them with when they walk across the stage at Pinkerton in 12th grade? That relationship with Pinkerton is critical. Another activity is we will meet with building principals and teacher leaders to gain an understanding of the status of current district initiatives, including but not limited to response to intervention, what we call RTI. And that really is a systematic way of supporting students that might need remediation or acceleration. Also, professional learning communities. That's an initiative where teachers get together, they collaborate to create work products. They collaborate to look at student assessment data. And it's a research-based practice that actually yields very positive results for our students. Another acronym is the Universal Design for Learning, something that is another initiative in the Hampstead School District. And that really looks at creating access and equity for all students. And again, our social emotional learning program, making sure that we are educating the whole child. It is my assessment in my short tenure that Hampstead has really good systems in place. Now, the last 18 months has been really challenging for folks. And really what, what our job as a leadership team is and my job as a superintendent is, is to really enhance existing systems and obviously build on new systems as well. And, and these are some areas in which we'll do that. So this is goal number one, to examine the current instructional practices within the Hampstead School District. And again, there's a much more comprehensive list in the plan. Goal number two is to develop and maintain a proactive and open relationship with community members, parents, civic leaders, and the local business community. And so we will extend, or have extended, I should say, a meeting invitation to community leaders, faith-based organizations, emergency services, Hampstead Board of Selectmen, and other individuals to discuss community partnerships with the Hampstead School District. So we're in the process of sending out those invitations now. We've sent out a few dozen. We will continue to send, send those out over the next couple of days. Again, we can come to you, you can come to us. The important thing is, is we need to begin to enhance the partnership that already exists between the schools. The, the, the students are the ones that really stand to gain from that partnership. And, you know, Nicole and I had the opportunity on Friday to, to tour the public library, to meet with the director of the library. And really, what a truly remarkable place the Hampstead. what a truly remarkable place the Hampstead Public Library is. If you haven't been over there in some time, and admittedly, myself, I haven't spent a lot of time lately in our public libraries, it's such an amazing place. It's not just a place where you check out books, they have a lot of very interesting summer reading, you know, contests, you can, you can check out a telescope, or a STEM kit. There's some really amazing work going on there. I'm excited to partner with the library, again, to offer programs to students outside of the traditional school day. Additionally, I've sent out an invitation to parents and guardians to meet either in-person or Zoom, we can do that in small groups, we can do that individually. These are listening sessions, I just want to learn as much as I can. Again, focused on three questions that are very similar to the questions that I'd ask the staff. You know, what do you see is, what do you value most about the Hampstead School District? Where do you believe that there are some improvements? And the, the third question, what do you expect from the Superintendent of Schools? And then the third one, what I'm excited about is, we'll hold an open house for community members. If you can't make one of the listening sessions, you know, we will announce a date for community members to just come in and, and tour the office. It's, it's still a work in progress, we're still waiting for furniture, we're still, you know, painting, well, I don't want to say "we," I'm not painting anything, but we, there's some work that needs to be done. Our, our house is not ready yet, but at some point it will be, and when it does, we will open up the office, invite folks in, so that you can see what your, what your money is, is, is getting you. And again, I, I really, I have to just pause and thank Jeff Dowd and the staff members that he has brought over with him, absolutely phenomenal, the work that has gone in to this new SAU office, also while, you know, performing all of the other tasks for the Timbaland School District, it's, it's really impressive, and I thank Jeff and Melissa and the others in the office as well. Goal number three is to gain a comprehensive understanding of the operational needs of the school district. So I will be establishing a superintendent advisory council. This is going to be comprised of representative stakeholders within the schools, both the Central School and the Middle School. The advisory council will include teacher, par educator, office staff, building administrators, school counselor, nurse, and, and others, this is not an exhaustive list. And really, what I, what I want to do is, I want to understand what the operational needs are of the school, and I want this to serve as a sounding board, so that when issues do come up within the school, we can talk about those issues at the advisory council meetings. Additionally, in collaboration with the Hampstead Chief Financial Officer, Jeff Dowd, we're looking for ways to update the current school budget development process. We want to increase transparency and community involvement. You know, this is something over the last few months that I've heard a lot about, is that people have a lot of faith and a lot of trust in, in the Hampstead schools, but they just want to, you know, they want to know more about the process. How's the budget developed? You know, what do we prioritize our spending on? And I'm, I'm excited to partner with, with Mr. Dowd to be able to do that. And then when we talk about operational needs, we really have to talk about the group that is at the core of our operation, and that is students. And so, in collaboration with building principals, I'd like to conduct some listening sessions with a diverse group of student stakeholders in grades kindergarten through grade eight. I've already had the opportunity to do this at both schools informally. I've learned a lunch, a lot about their feelings about lunch and about recess, but, but those are some of the more superficial issues I'd really like to dig down with some of our students, and talk about things like equity, opportunity, access, you know, talk about their learning. They are key stakeholders, they are, the, the students that walk through the doors of the Hampstead School District are future lawyers and doctors and small business owners and teachers. They have so much to offer, they have a lot of really great ideas, they're very creative, no offense, but sometimes they are not jaded by the, the world of being an adult. And they, they will play a pivotal role in me being able to have a 360-degree view of the Hampstead School District. And the fourth goal is to develop and enhance the capacity for organizational leadership within the Hampstead School District. This goal is very specific to the fact that we have a lot of new school leaders that will be joining us for this upcoming school year. You had an opportunity to meet Peter, we have Nicole coming on, we have Tracy who'll be joining us in, in Student Services, you, you have Tara Lynn, who'll be the principal of the Central School, in addition to our district office staff as well. So it's really important that we're having a lot of really deliberate conversations about leadership. What's the vision for our leadership team? How do we build capacity? We have a lot of teachers who are, you know, future school leaders, we want to make sure that we are promoting that every chance that we can get, build from within, build up our own to the expectations and standards that have always been the Hampstead schools. So to do this, we'll establish an annual leadership retreat for district and building-level leadership. That leadership retreat, we're going to focus on creating building-level and individual professional goals, as well as professional learning opportunities. We will check in, you know, we will meet every other week, so that we have the opportunity to push each other on those goals, and to be able to support one another throughout the school year. Another activity would be in collaboration with the Hampstead Director of Student Services, we're going to look to reorganize, and this work has already begun, the Department of Special Education into the Department of Student Services, for the purposes of creating operational efficiencies and maximizing support for students, you've heard me say it before, that the moving from a model of strictly special ed to student services really helps to recognize and honor the fact that we have many diverse groups of students, many unique learners, and we need to make sure that we account for all learners, not just our students in special education. And then, again, we've had this discussion, one of the activities will be to develop a framework for a new five-year strategic plan that incorporates representatives from various stakeholder groups in the school and larger community. So again, I believe that this 90-day plan will help me understand the values of all stakeholders within the community, will allow us to create priorities, operational efficiencies, as we move into the work of creating the five-year strategic plan. And again, parents should have received the email that has the full plan in it, we'll make the plan available on the SAU website. You can also contact me directly, I'd be happy to share the plan, have a conversation with families or community members about the plan. And with that said, I would be willing to entertain any questions that, that folks might have.
Board members?
I actually don't think I have any questions. I just want to say, I really appreciate your willingness and desire to reach out to every single person in town. It's really appreciated.
And, and I have to tell you, I, I've had a handful of conversations so far. I, I think I've said it before, so I sound like a broken record, the pride people have for this community is amazing. The opportunity, when given, to talk about a favorite, a favorite teacher their child had, or the impacts that a, that a staff member had on their kid, like, these are extraordinary conversations to have, I'm really enjoying them, and it's, it's really given me some great insight into, into the, to the district.
I think this is great, so, looking forward to it.
Yeah, same. I mean, Ms. Thompson and I have talked about this plan quite a bit, and I appreciate everything that's in it. I think there's a lot of goodness here. I'd, I just challenge not Mr. Thompson, but the community. We've heard from a lot of community members, especially over the last 18 months, that want transparency, they want change, they want input. This is the time. Mr. Thompson's going to be there for at least three years, but I mean, you know, you got the building, brand-new building, come on down, he'll meet you at Bean Town or wherever, to, to just talk about this and have your input part of it. And your input will be part of this. It's not something that's just put to the side as a checkbox, if I talk to somebody. I know Mr. Thompson's very sincere about this, so I'd challenge anybody in the community to get ahold of Mr. Thompson, and he's been very forthright with, here's my cellphone number, here's my email, probably his fax number, and any other way to get ahold of him.
Do people still send faxes?
Yeah, once in a great while.
Yeah.
You know, I just say to the community, reach out, this is the time, you want to be a part of the strategic plan, the new SAU, new curriculum, everything, this is the time to do it. So, it's on you, it's on us.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that 100%. I mean, as a parent, being able to talk to you, and Nicole as well, you know, to just talk about different things was, is really great, and it's nice to feel heard, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, possibly the last agenda item before we will go to non-public is school board goals. This is something that, I'd say traditionally, we've done later, you know, as we come into September timeframe. I'd like to discuss about getting the school board goals done this summer, so that way the goals are known as we enter the school year with the students. I don't know, anybody else, any comments around that, what your thoughts are?
On whether we should, or what some of the goals would be?
Yeah. Whether we should or not, I want to first start with that.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with that, so we know what we're going into and where we are.
You know, we don't have any other meetings, of course, you know, I know we still have to finish the superintendent eval process, so my suggestion is, let's, let's take it, let's say, special meeting by special meeting. I'd like to suggest we have our next special meeting dedicated to this, we'd maybe do it for like 90 minutes, not just an hour, and I think then we can get through the superintendent's goals, and then probably get into the school board goals as well. I know it's kind of premature to ask you all, when are you available? I think everybody's got a busy summer schedule, but I'd like to, you know, I'll send out an email after this meeting, on the next day, asking what are some timeframes you're available, that we can, you know, do a 90-minute or more, whatever it takes to get through this. We would send out the goals that you have in front of you, which were the 20 through 21 board goals, but I think it's also relevant to bring the previous board goals for 2019 to 2020, because we did slim these down because there was so much concentration on COVID, SAU, 55, transition, et cetera, that we should reflect on both the years to come up with what those goals are. Does that sound? Okay, alright. So I think that is in closing for the meeting. Now, for the non-public, before we go into non-public, we would like just a quick reason why we're going in, so I'm going to be making a motion myself, that we will be going into non-public to mostly talk about what is known as the Butterfield Report. So we are, I am looking, I am making a motion that we move to, that the Hampstead School District as SAU 55 disclosed the Butterfield Report to the current SAU board members in non-public, with any subsequent decisions as to the future disclosure to be made by the Hampstead School Board as SAU 55.
You motioned, I'm seconding.
Yes, I'm making the motion.
Correct?
Correct.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I will say that we do expect to come out of non-public and vote on some motions, or motion, depending how we go about this. So we will be coming out of non-public, I do not know a time, this could go on 15 minutes, it could go on an hour and 15 minutes, so I would just say, stay tuned, and that's what we would be doing, coming out of non-public with some votes. And with that, I'd like to now make a motion, or ask for a motion to go to non-public, or-
We got to vote. We have to vote on the motion.
Oh yeah, that's right, we got to vote on that, yes, vote. All approved on the motion? Alright. Now, I'm seeking a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
Seconded by-
Under, yep.
Oh. Do you want the numbers, or?
I motioned to go into non-public under RSA 91A:3, Section 2, A, C, and L.
Excuse me, Caitlin, what were the letters that you referenced?
A, C, and L.
Thank you. And Mr. Giard, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to pull the board now.
Please.
Mr. Giard?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Mrs. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Pellegrini?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. It's about 8:05.
...in the New Hampshire Supreme Court, in the case Hampstead School Board versus SAU 55, as moot for the following reasons. Hampstead School District and SAU 55 have merged as the single district SAU 55. The board has been provided with a copy of the Butterfield Report, and there is no remaining dispute between the Hampstead Board and SAU 55. The Hampstead School Board no longer has any interest in furthering its cross-appeal. The Hampstead School Board does not object to withdraw, withdrawal of the SAU's appeal, and SAU 55 does not object to withdrawal of the Hampstead School Board's cross-appeal.
Second.
Alright, take a roll.
Yes.
Any discussions? Alright.
Yes.
Jason, Erin?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And none of us? Okay, I would like to actually take one more vote to seal the minutes, I'd like to make the motion to seal the minutes from the non-public indefinitely. So, I made the motion?
Second.
Alright.
Okay, my only question is, do we have to list our reason in the motion?
Oh, good point.
I mean, it's under legal.
Under legal? I don't have my piece of paper, but it's under legal and reputation.
Yes.
So, I'll take that back, make motion for nondisclosure of the, to seal the meeting minutes indefinitely, under legal and reputation. So I get a second still from Jason?
Yep.
Alright, take the roll, Jason?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And myself. There we go. Alright, this concludes our meeting. Do we have to take a motion to come out? Alright, so thank you Hampstead, a lot to discuss, definitely a huge thank you to Mr. Thompson for his 90-day plan, and we look forward to the community's involvement to better our students' population, learning, education, and more. Thank you all very much, have a good night.